I'd like to welcome our visitors this evening. The open meetings law poster is by the board. By the door over there, and we'll have roll call now.
Donovan?
Here.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And then here, Ashler?
Here.
Shelkov?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes. Need a declaration of illegal meetings? In two seconds, we're going to declare this illegal meeting. Roll call.
Second by Donovan?
Yes. Sir.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes, Ashler?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
Excuse anybody?
Nope.
This is a portion of the meeting that we use for public comment. If you'd like to address the board, just come forward. Then we'll go into reports from administration. Do you want to start, Jim?
Yeah. We have registration completed for the school year, except for any student that may fail a class that we have to reschedule. So I'll provide those numbers to you later on in another board meeting. Lots of positive things about our kids academically, whether it be from ACT scores and academic involvement with the SNC, to ACT overall. We had thirty-eight seniors that took the ACT, or had thirty-eight seniors, thirty of them took the ACT. Fifteen of them scored twenty-three in math. So, it goes in cycles. We sometimes wonder why our ACTs and scores are not better. A lot of it has to do with the individual student. That's where we put in the time of the effort. We had some students that are past graduates, recognized at UNL for outstanding achievement as sophomores. That's always good to hear. Our Quiz Bowl, that competed against the likes of Norfolk, Bellevue West, Grand Island Northwest, won the state title in Quiz Bowl in holders. That's quite a feat from a classy school, a more central suburb. A lot of good things, a lot of good accomplishments for our kids, not only this year, but from past years. Do you have any questions?
First, Joe, graduation.
Well, thank you all for your involvement in graduation. Thank you.
Mr. Klein? Not really a whole lot to add to the written report. We do have some Iowa test basic skills results. They have come back. Both of our sixth and eighth grade students took those tests. And I share a little bit of those results with the board every year in May. This year, I highlighted the overall trend in performance in our math, math performance area. So if you have any questions on anything I've given you there, I'll be happy to answer any questions you have. It's last week of school, a lot of things going on. Tomorrow afternoon at the gym, our fifth graders have their states fair. That's a pretty interesting event that they put on. You're invited to come if you have the opportunity. It says twelve-thirty to two-thirty, but actually I believe it's twelve-forty-five to two-forty-five. So, if you can come for a little while, that'd be great. We'd love to have you. Wednesday afternoon, we have a brief learning celebration called a rec rap. That lasts about an hour. That starts around twelve-forty. And we'll be doing a lot of different recognitions there. And then we have a talent show with our students and even some of our staff participate in that to finish up Wednesday afternoon. Thursday is an early dismissal day. It's the last day of school. We're out at eleven-ten. Eighth grade graduation starts right around ten o'clock in the morning. That's in the gym. And I would invite any board members that want to come to any of those activities, events that we're having this week. It's a pretty eventful week, and so you're more than welcome to attend. We finished up track season. The boys and girls both had great seasons. The boys had a particularly strong season and was happy to see them work hard and succeed. And other than that, it's the end of another year. It's hard to believe it's gone by so fast, but our staff and our students have done a terrific job, answered the in. Couldn't be more pleased or proud in terms of how they've done and how the year's gone. So, I'd like to thank them, I think the board too. Do you have any questions, Mr. Klein?
Once again, I'd like to thank you for the great job you did at the middle school. I'm going to miss you, Mr. Klein. You just did a really good job.
Thank you, Dennis.
Not much to add to the written report. I would also like to extend an invitation to come to our end of the year assembly on Thursday morning. Ours is at eight-thirty, so you'll be able to take in the elementary and get to the middle school in time for theirs. Should be a fun, about an hour. I'd like to invite you to come if you're able. And on Wednesday, the day before, we'll have an all-school picnic, so if you'd like to join us for a picnic. Should be nice weather. We'll be outside for that. So, anytime you could stop by this week, there should be some fun things going on. So, you're welcome to come. I'd love to see you then. Any questions for me?
Just a couple of things. I wanted to thank my secretary, Jody, and bookkeeper Lynn, and then the principals, Jeremy, Michelle, and Jim, for their work and efforts while I was recovering from surgery. And they went above and beyond, and I appreciate everything they did. I was able to kind of assimilate back into work and not be too far behind just because of everything they did. So, I was very much, very much appreciative. And I'm going to turn the rest of my time over to Nikki Kuhn, who's going to make a little presentation.
I just wanted to update the board about teammates and where we are at the end of this year. Currently, we have twenty matches. Seven of our matches will be at the high school this year. Six of them will be freshmen, so that's exciting. We have some scholarship money that we'll be able to start doling out next year as well, hopefully this year. We have four students currently in need of mentors. So if anybody knows anybody interested, my mentee, my fingernails pink and green, so we're having a really good time. This year, we had several events that we did. We did a movie night, mentor recognition, January, the basketball game, we went bowling. We had our annual fundraiser at the end of March, and then an end of the year picnic at the end of April. All of the events were well attended, and I think everybody's having a really good time. Becky Atkinson, it was decided tonight at our teammates board meeting, will be taking over as coordinator, starting in August for teammates, as I will be leaving. Mr. Novell has agreed, and I think the district administration has agreed, that she'll be a great fit. Becky and I will be meeting and working at getting things figured out, so that that transition will be very smooth for her and everybody involved in the fall. I have some, I've got one of my matches here with me tonight. They're just going to talk for a couple of minutes. They have been matched for two and a half years. They were one of the first matches that I've made. It's Brandy Sumacek, and her mentor is Joanne Heath. So we're just going to talk.
Brandy has words to share with you.
Hi, I am Brandy Sumacek. I'm going to tell you why I enjoy teammates. I enjoy it because it gives me someone to talk to other than just at home. And I am actually enjoying Heath as my mentor. We do a lot of stuff together, and we try to meet once a week at school. We just talk or play games. As a teammate program group, we do a lot of things together, such as bowling, basketball games, and picnics. All of these activities have been directed by Mrs. Kim. Mrs. Kim has been a great director of this program, and I am sad to see her leave. We would like to thank her for your commitment.
Well, I really believe in the teammate program, of course, for the obvious reasons. I think everybody needs somebody to stand beside them to help, and that's what we've done. Our relationship has grown into a real friendship, and it's just been a blessing to me. I think one of the reasons why we've been successful is because Brandy's family and her parents and grandparents know me and trust me, and so we have really bonded a friendship. And I consider Brandy the granddaughter that I didn't have. So it's been a real blessing to me.
Thank you.
Thank you for doing such a good job of that.
That's great.
I'll miss you too. Then I guess we move into the action items. The first is approval of the minutes of April ninth, regular board meeting. Moved by Jan and seconded by Randy. That the board approved the minutes of the April ninth, regular board meeting. Discussion. Roll call.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes, Ashler?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
Need a motion to accept the financial reports as presented? Seconded by Mark. That the board approved the general fund claims in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six. Whoops, that's the wrong financial report, sorry. The board, you can add that. The board approved the financial reports as presented. Moved by Jim and seconded by Mark. Roll call.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
None yes, Ashler?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
Now, the board approved the general fund claims as presented. Moved by Jan.
Second.
Seconded by Randy. That the board approved general fund claims in the amount of one-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand, two-hundred-and-thirty-six dollars and seventy-four cents. Discussion.
I think the big one on there was the lease payment for our computers. GE Capital, that is sixty-one thousand, five thirteen. That's our third lease payment for next year, and that's the end of our three-year lease next year on our one-to-one laptops. So, we'll have to be thinking ahead to next year about whether we want to continue and sign a new lease, et cetera. So, just letting you know that's...
Have you added very many in the three years?
I think we've pretty much maybe just added a couple. I think we've pretty much just used the same...
But they lasted three years?
Yeah. Yeah. We've maybe had a couple that didn't, and we've added a couple, but for the most part, I think we've used the same, the same set. But we'll, next year, I know Randy, we'll get all that information for you to show how many numbers we've lost. As far as enrollment too, you know, we may have lost enough in enrollment that we had plenty of computers too, so...
Shelkov?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Ashler?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes, and Del Meyer?
Yes.
Next is, the board approved the contract for Laura Stuben, elementary instructor. Need a motion?
Second.
Moved by Lightline, seconded by Jim. That the board approved the contract for Mrs. Laura Stuben as an elementary instructor for the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen school year. Discussion? Roll call.
Lightline?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes, Ashler?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
The next is, the board approved the following handbooks as presented. High school, middle school, elementary, student and staff, and activities. Need a motion? Jan?
Second.
Mark? It's moved, the board approved the following handbooks, moved by Jan and seconded by Mark. Discussion? I guess I have a couple of questions. The way I read this, what we talked about, a lot of times is wrong. They state the same as it was reading before, is that right?
Correct. It was, part of it was my fault. We normally do that handbook in the summer, and I had told Jody to get the handbooks together, and I admit, I admit, the high school, middle school, elementary, it just was a little mixed up, so I apologize. It's mostly my fault.
Okay, that's one other thing. I talked about this last year, but I guess I'm against some of the policies around there. And I've made my point to everybody here under the management of the institution. The other discussion about the handbook? Roll call.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None yes, Ashler?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Next is that the board approved recommendations from the finance committee for classified staff wages.
I moved that the board approved the financial, the finance committee's recommendation of a three percent increase in classified staff wages.
Second.
Moved by Jan and seconded by Dave. That the board approved the finance committee's recommendation of a three percent increase in classified staff wages. Discussion?
Is that what we did last year?
Classified staff includes...
There's forty of them. It'd be pretty much all your non-teaching, bus drivers, cooks, paras, secretaries.
Okay.
Fifty percent. Yep.
Roll call.
Klein Schmidt?
Yes.
Ashler?
Yes.
Lightline?
Yes.
Maloney? That's all right, Maloney?
Yes.
None yes, Shelkov?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
Now we go into the discussion items. The first item on the discussion is facilities, project slash bond.
I had talked to Dennis about putting this on. I just feel like we need a little bit of closure. At least it's been, I didn't plan on missing school the last six to eight weeks, but the timing wasn't very good. But I always feel like, you know, we had a vote, we had a lot of community involvement. It was very much appreciated, and certainly the community voted no on this particular project. But I doesn't really, I don't really think it changes the fact that we have, we have some needs. And so, I think, I think the board at least needs to put this on for a couple of months and have some good, mature, healthy discussion on what we need to do. You know, we have, we have room in our building fund that we could levy more money and do some of the things ourself. I mean, if we want remodeled science rooms, I think we're more than capable of doing that without a vote, just a vote of the board and within our building fund. Or do we fix up the downtown gym? You know, part of our audit that we got from civil rights, we have to add a wheelchair lift to the shop. We have to do that. We have two years to do that. The shop could really use a new exhaust system too. When we put the new welding stuff in, the old exhaust is not good enough really to clear out the building. So we, we have, we have some needs. You know, do we need to somehow survey the people that voted against the bond? Although we don't know who it is, but I mean, do we somehow survey and find out what they didn't like? So I just think, I just think we need to have a discussion. For me to budget for next year, you know, we need to, we need to move forward and at least make a decision on some of the things, whether we want to do that or not. That's why I asked Dennis to put it on tonight.
Discussion over there?
Well, I feel like those of us that sat through all those meetings, I mean, we really opened the door to some things that need to be fixed in this building. And I don't think we should just let them sit. I mean, if those science building rooms need some updating, I think we better be looking at that. We also, you know, I didn't even realize those meetings. There is no bathroom in that area of the building. Maybe we need to be looking into doing something like that too. You know, find the necessities and deal with them, that's what we can handle.
You know, the downtown gym, we got a whole building next to it, is one reason, I think in the past, it's been reluctant to maybe fix it. You know, the city uses the middle part, the senior center, and is, is it a time since to talk to, maybe the city and the school could do something together to fix up, Billy? Maybe we can talk to, I think it's a HU, one's the other. Maybe, maybe we can, you know, because I think if I, if, I may be wrong, but bathrooms are huge, right to the entry, right to the west of the entryway.
I believe so.
So really, there's not, the only bathrooms in there that would belong to school would be the locker rooms. I mean, maybe the three of us could work together if, you know, we're not, you know, if we decided it isn't ever going to happen, the gym up here, maybe the city, the school, and the private owner can work together, and maybe it would be more, we may see more of a benefit of fixing that. The city, you know, obviously, that building's old on the senior center side too, and they could probably use some updates too. Just throwing it out since we're talking.
And I agree with Jim, the big question would be, like, any projects you take on, as soon as you hit one nail into the wall? Better have a fire marshal there to find out when we have to meet codes.
No, I understand, but yeah.
Yeah, because I mean, that's going to cost us to bring it up to code with that.
The biggest thing, I'm sorry. The biggest thing that I have heard as far as feedback from the vote is that we really need to take care of what we've got. So, like Jan is talking about science rooms, downtown gym, we need to show the public that we're taking care of the existing facilities before I think we go back and ask them for them.
Maybe I think even, even with this building, as you look, you have to give a fire marshal in there. I hate saying this because I've gone through this with other facilities there. Doesn't matter if it's public or private. You have to all of a sudden say, okay, now that you updated it, it's going to be updated, and the fire code's still...
And our street lights are half up and burned out.
So I'm just throwing that out there again. It doesn't matter if it's here or if it's downtown.
I guess I've kind of heard the same thing Sherri's heard, and I did talk to the same person you did, Jim, about, I think it'd be a great idea for the school, and at least talk to the city. Nothing else, sit down and get, you know, so we're kind of all on the same page as far as what the community's looking at. And then I've heard the same things you have, of, you know, maybe not taking care of the things we have. Well, I guess my response to that was in years past, it wasn't the money to do that. You know, we were pretty tight against our, before we don't, but I mean, years and years past, it was, it was pretty tight. So that was my response to that. What I've heard from a lot of people that voted against it was what Sherri said, and I think it was a lot of money. You know, ten million dollars is a lot of money, and that's kind of the general consensus I've heard. I will say from the people that I talked to that voted against it, I think they're afraid we're doing something. And I think we need to come up with a plan that's probably not as grand, or else come up with some way of donating that, you know. I guess the number also out there is half of what we, you know, I think that would probably pass. Do we want to do that right now? No, I think we wait six months at least before we start into something like that, probably a year. But if we could come up with a group, you know, maybe you can go outside of our community and find some donations somewhere. You know, past graduates, I don't know. You know, that may be a fun part of that. Just, just a thought or just an idea. But I guess I'm going to bring up everybody here. I think we need to look at, okay, it's not going to pass. We need to fix some things in the next year, two years. We need to make some that.
I actually was approached by a group of citizens that said, can we come in, like, set up a public workday? Come in with equipment, come in with whatever, you know, if we need to replace ceiling tiles, if we need to do lighting outside, is that something that the board would consider? To create some community support and let the people actually come to work? I know the issue would be insurance and liability, that, you know, it's not a bad idea. Is that something that we could do?
I think we can get the burden done. It's a matter of deciding what to spend the money on. The outside lights, the problem we're having is they basically all have to be taken out and put up and P P new ones. And Jim, we priced it, Jim, didn't we, like a year ago? And it was a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars.
I was through some grants.
What happens with these right now is they're just poorly made, and when the wind blows, they burn out and break. And the bases are pop metal, and they just slowly shake, and Bob works at it. He tightens them up. He's had them repaired, and it just, it's a never-ending, it's just a constant...
And the bellies are obsolete.
Constant nightmare.
We've tried to find bells to replace these, and we can't. They've tried to re, and direct wire, that hasn't worked. So it's not like we haven't tried. They're just not very good.
And we spent about, you know, ninety thousand on our track last year. So I think we're making the effort. It's more just deciding what projects we want to do. We got, we can get the money in the building fund and do them. I think that's really, really the key. And I appreciate Randy's comments. You know, my thought going in was, was that a five or six million dollar project's a whole lot easier to get passed. But I think, I think at this particular juncture, we looked at everything, and, and so maybe we need to whittle it down and do the things that are the most necessary. And then if we still feel like we have a need five or 10 years down the road, we try that one later or something. I don't know, but it's been a good discussion. I appreciate everyone's comments, and I'm not ending the discussion, but I, I just think we need to leave it here for maybe two or three months and... Do you think we should keep the committee involved?
I guess one thing I like to do is get more feedback from the committee. You know, whether it come to us as board members, or Mark, or the committee, you know, give us some feedback. And that's the only way, you know, if we're going to bring something up in a year, two years, whatever, you know, what does it all contribute? And maybe if we advertise or post through our newsletter, or our website, or whatever, you know, there may be some people that were, that voted against it that maybe should be on there to help, maybe what maybe could pass, or they have ideas that are different, or could streamline what we did. And maybe have a, you know, some of the people maybe burned out on the committee, form a new committee, I guess, not to get rid of the old committee, because some of them are, sure, would need to be on there. But somehow get more feedback and, and, you know, invite people to come to a meeting, and if, that way, everyone has the opportunity, which I'm sure they did before, but this way, we're starting over, so let's have a new committee. Well, like you said, they may bring a new idea or two that, you know, hasn't been thought of before, you know, on how, how to go about it.
We probably leave this, if we wanted to meet with the city, how does that, how does that work? If our board wanted to meet with them, we just set a date and have to... does that work? If our board wanted to meet with them, we just set a date and have to publicize it? Or do you have to be like a small group of us?
It doesn't matter. You get their buildings, the ground committee, and our buildings.
I think, I think it'd be best to meet with their committees and have the committee.
Because obviously, some city councilmen have contacted several of us. So they're really in it. And I guess, I don't want to let that drop. If they're willing to talk and share some information, I think we should jump on that.
Yeah, that may not be able to solve, but.
Yeah, but at least it shows that we're all working together for one.
Start as dialogue.
Yeah.
Yes.
Would the Buildings and Grounds Committee want to meet with the committee from the city then?
Yes.
Before next board meeting?
I think theirs was, was it the board piece?
I don't know if you can see on it, or. I'll, I'll volunteer, I'll volunteer to talk to Kyle.
Yeah, okay.
And see who it is, and see if we can set something up.
I think as far as wheelchair lift goes, we could probably get donations. That was the only time I seen many chairs yet, that graduation, when Derek left. I think there'll be some donations there. And how much more can we raise our general fund levy to do some of these projects if we want to do it by our own money?
Well, you, you can have a building fund levy as high as fourteen cents, as long as it doesn't push you above the dollar five. And we're at, we're at eighty-nine plus four, right? We got four cents in the building fund or something like that. So, I mean, you could raise it to maximum if you wanted to, but I don't think people would probably like that too much, to be honest with you. So, I mean, I'm anticipating that evaluations are going to increase and our levy's going to drop again. But four cents right now gives us Mark about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year in our building fund. And I think we got a total balance of about half a million in there now. We got a chiller to replace at the elementary, which will be fairly large amount of money. But other than that, we're just, we're using our building fund mainly to change lighting in all the buildings and new carpet, and we're doing it with some, some things like that. But we certainly could levy more in there.
Remodel the science rooms?
Yeah. I mean, we're capable, but the decision's got to be made this summer sometime so that when we budget, we have it. Because you don't, you don't collect most of your money till next September and May, May and September. You collect a little during the year, but when you set your levy in October, most of that money comes in in the May and September of the following year. So you kind of have to be looking a year down the road to set that levy going, so.
I guess we probably need some information on the science projects, the cost, and some ideas from people to set this up. So maybe that would be the first thing we'll tackle. Because I think we made a commitment to the public that we would do something about the science rooms, even if the bond didn't pass. And so I, I think we should.
I can talk with the architect we used to see if they, what they were charged to, to make it rolling for, so should I do that?
What needs to be done?
Or what needs to be.
Yeah, I'd like to just see what needs to be done.
I'm not sure that they're going to do it for free.
No, I understand. Yeah, right.
I mean, I think we asked them that. They did that already. So I'm guessing it's going to cost us a little bit. But it wouldn't hurt me to make the phone call, just about at least. So, they didn't really have a lot of detail work done, Jim. That was, that was, they weren't going to do all that work until it passed. Because they'd be putting in a lot of useless hours if it didn't, if it didn't pass, which is.
I'm wondering with the, the lights outside, I wonder if NPBD's got some kind of grant idea for that, program for that. I mean, it's all electricity.
Jim, do you remember?
They put a proposal together, but I'd have to dig it up again to see. And there might be something new now, too, Jim, in there.
I mean, it's kind of, it's not like you could, you've got a lot of people going to come in and give you bid. They kind of have control.
Right.
It's there. So, and, and I agree, it, it looks kind of bad. And I think the public looks at it and says, jeez, they're not taking care of them. Well, I'll guarantee you how many times we've replaced those globes and tried on the lights. And you can go out right now and probably push one of those poles and wobble a foot or two. I mean, just those poor, poor construction. And if you think thirty-seven years ago, that's when they were put in. So thirty-seven years of wind over time, just the way it goes. But I, I'm not opposed. It's money well spent. I just don't know if it would be number one on our priority list, but it maybe ought to be in there somewhere. So.
Perception.
Mm-hmm. At least we talked about it, too, and these people would know, at least be considering it.
Any other discussion on the facilities issue?
You had some committee here, and you wanted to see if anybody had anything to say, or really not.
Is there any public comment on the facilities?
You got contractors in town here, you got Electric Andrews and, what, Shellkoff and some of those people. Why don't you ask them, what did it cost to do those lights? And you got other people that put up million-dollar buildings. Well, you can put up a million-dollar building for a hell of a lot less than what you let that bond go for, say. There's people like here in town that do that kind of work and know what they're doing. Why not get their price on lights or science rooms and stuff like that? Because they're knowledgeable contractors. They do sewer, water here, Shellkoff, he does everything, Andrews does that stuff. Fairmont uses Andrews up there all the time to do their electrical work. Or they go to West Point. If they got problems there, Andrews is up there right away to fix lights and repair them. So, city owns them, is where, what NPBD owns all your lights here in Lincoln? Or, I mean, here in, in Geneva? Your electrical systems?
Right, NPBD is the street.
NPBD owns all your lights here in Lincoln. I mean, sorry, I'm in Lincoln so much. But Geneva compared to Fairmont, which is, the city of Fairmont owns that, but they get contractors out of here all the time to set up poles or problems. So use what sort of resources you got here in town to give you some fair market value and stuff. And you got other people that put up million-dollar buildings here in town, use them, give you an idea of reconstructing some of this or redoing your science rooms and stuff. They ain't going to need a, you know, a basic architecture. You can have a plan, but they can come in and do it for a lot less because they haven't got to pay that high union wage. I think it was under government contracts, it was forty-seven dollars. They got to pay union wages for your construction of your, when they come in and build a school, there's a certain law they got to meet, which I think is forty-seven dollars an hour, where these people here don't get forty-seven dollars an hour. So that makes your project less just on labor costs, too, I think.
Anyone else have any comments on that?
I think there was a lot of perception that it was too big of a project. I think the committee was hoping for some economies of scale. You know, thirty years ago, was this building built thirty, forty years ago? You know, the theater could have been built for ten percent of what it was now. So I think we were hoping that we could just invest in the future and just build it all at the same time and be done and not nickel and dime. You know, if you move a construction company in and then you come back a few years later, you're going to probably double your cost just in that. So that was, you know, I think there's a lot of, lot of perceptions that were not how the committee felt and why the committee asked for what, you know, we recommended. So that was disappointing, I think, to the committee kind of defeating. We really meant to make it as an investment of the kids. And that's not how people perceived it, which is too, too bad, because I think our kids are some of the best kids ever. And, you know, does anybody deserve anything? No. But, you know, the speech and drama kids in this school and music kids are tops in the state. So, you know, we invest in our athletic program. We, as a committee, I, and you guys please chime in, because I'm not the committee, I'm just a portion of it. I think we felt like it was an investment in our kids, the speech and drama. So I really hope that you do get some dialogue. I hope you do get, I think there are a lot of committee members that are burnt out. And so I think there needs to be some new blood.
And I think, like Carla said, you know, Randy talked about cutting it in half. And to us, that meant either build a new gym or build the theater. And, you know, that's, you know, two very big needs. And we kind of risked alienating, you know, I know people that wouldn't have voted for it if it was just a theater. And I know people that wouldn't have voted for it if it was just the gym. Two very, you know, very important things. And the thing is, our kids are, most of those kids are involved in both things anyway. But again, it's perception on what, you know, what people need. So I think that's why, kind of why we included both of those, you know, big, big-ticket items, because we thought they were both necessary. So, whether you build lower-quality things, whether you build smaller things, you know, I, that will be a tough choice for the next committee that meets is, you know, where do you want to start? And I agree, I think the science rooms would be great. I think the school should take that on and, you know, that would reduce, you know, reduce the need by that much. And.
I think, too, I think a lot of us would encourage you still to really strongly think about keeping everything on this campus. There's a lot of reason as a parent that I think that my kids would be benefited by having everything on this campus. And to be honest with you, we talked to a lot, a lot of different age group of people in the elementary. Like, if you just have an elementary kid, there's a lot of things we discuss with them that they didn't think were necessary. And we said to them, just wait till your kids up there. And so I think if we do this again, somehow, we need to have more dialogue from parents and more, I don't know, just because I would say with a hundred percent certainty that until I had kids up here, I didn't get it. Just, I didn't, you know, that doesn't seem necessary, or that doesn't need, and then once you have a kid in this school, in the different school buildings, you, you understand it better. So.
I think we should have more feedback from the taxpayers who are paying for this, to see what they feel they can afford to pay. And I feel that that was not done.
How would you suggest to do that? Like, give, like, an amount, or?
Take surveys. Talk to people, have meetings before it goes to a vote. I've been reading.
We have.
I've been reading the mint in paper, and they're trying to do something. And they had three different ways that they could go. And the, the public was totally involved. It wasn't just a select group on a committee.
It was, it was, and that's, see, that's, again, that's a perception, because it was advertised. You might not have seen it, but it was advertised.
And it's funny, I, you know, I talked to somebody in the bar that night, and I said, you know, he voted against it, and I, and I said, next time, will you be on the committee? No, I'm not going to be on the committee. You know, they, some people just aren't interested.
I know.
So.
But I am, so.
Good, well, we're calling you.
Okay.
No, but you wouldn't let people, the construction people on the committee begin with.
No. That is not true.
Mike Mothus, he offered to go on there, you wouldn't let him go on?
Mike Mothus came to some of the meetings.
Did he?
On opposing side.
Huh?
I think we better move on here. The next thing as a discussion item is the administrative salaries. The finance committee, Matt Fryer, to the meeting, and they, what were the decisions?
Well, some of the discussion was on both the teacher contract salary increase as well as the administrative increase. And the feeling right now is to tie those closer together. And so we're working with the, what's that group called, Mark?
I've seen a Billmore Central Education Association.
Yeah, group. And, and Mark will be talking to them about the numbers that we're working on tonight. So that's kind of next on, on Mark's to-do list, to do that. So that's kind of where we're wrapped, at least from tonight's discussion.
Yeah. Jan, correct me if I'm wrong, but we thought it would be best to tie the administrative salaries to the teacher negotiations and then do it all at one time. If the board agrees with that, for, for the administrators and the teachers.
Making all the same amount, maybe. Don't we have to change, I remember discussing a while back, that do something definitely to teachers' salary because there's deadlines and stuff?
Just the process, instead of negotiating for next year in the spring, which we're doing now, then for the following year, you start in the fall. So we'd be starting in this September for the following year, instead of doing it like we do now in the spring. We're still, we're still selling for next year right now. But for the following year, we have to start negotiations in September. You have to actually be finished by December or else it goes to a fact-finding, like a legal committee.
And move it up six months, I guess.
Yeah, basically, that's true. Basically, that's true. We're, what we're trying to, what we're trying to look at with the teachers is a two-year agreement. So we don't have to do it in the fall right away. See if we can settle for next year and the year after in the long. But I don't think that's what we're referring to on the administrators. I think we're just referring to next year, right?
What's the advantages or disadvantages of tying two together? Well, I made the picture on the spot.
That's why we brought it before, to see. I thought it was important that we discussed it before we come up with a recommendation.
Okay.
Or how to come up with it. How to come up with the, with the.
So we'll have a recommendation for next month, is that what?
We probably will, because I think we'll have one for the teachers, too.
So what exactly are we talking about? We're going to have one vote to raise teachers and administrative salaries at the same?
No, they would be kept separate.
But you're going to keep the percentage?
Tie the, the percentage is closer together.
You're talking about, say, you negotiate one percent or five percent, then maybe both be the same percent, instead of two separate, is what you're talking about?
I think when, just in the committee meeting, trying to, trying to keep a fairness issue that one's not higher than one one year, and lower than one the next, to try to tie it in to be somewhat, somewhat the same. But.
Has it been, you know, such last year, has it been, has it been like that? Teachers might be three and administration two, and next year, a lot?
I'd say it's been up and down both ways over the years. There are schools that do tie it, tie it together. So that way, basically, you're always looking at one, one percentage.
Right, and I'm sure you didn't come up with this out of blue, so obviously, it's probably out of place.
Well, say, Drew, were you able to share that from the School Board Association, the salaries for all the principal and superintendents throughout the state of Nebraska, please?
No idea.
I'll send that out to all the members.
We did have the ones from ten schools, the conference.
Yes, we got the conference plus whole state. That's, there's no secret there.
I get, I get that, too.
Yeah. We'll get that sent out, too.
It's just, it's hard to sit and compare three hundred, three hundred schools with, you know, for our, for our classified staff and for our teachers, we just use the conference. Just a lot easier to look at eleven schools, but.
Can we move on to the insurance bid?
Yeah, we, I was notified, you know, we bid insurance, and we've been bidding it for three years. And it seems like we just did it like a year or two ago. But Indiana Insurance, which is the carrier, and Stu Seward represents them, they no longer will provide us insurance after September one. I think they've dropped Iowa and Nebraska from their insurance pool. He didn't give me any reason. We haven't, we haven't had a lot of claims, so I know they haven't lost money on us, but they're just not going to do it. So. So what's happening, Jody is working with Stu, and basically, Stu gives her, you know, what we've covered in the past, and, and she'll send that out. We'll advertise that, you know, people can notify us, and we'll mail it to them. But we'll just send it to a lot of the local people automatically ourselves. And then, we don't have a lot of time. So what I was hoping to do is that we would ask for the bids to be due, like, the afternoon of July sixteenth board meeting, and then we would open them that evening and award one that night. Just because by September one, you know, we're just running, running out of time. And I think the last time we did it, companies complained that we didn't give them enough time between, like, right now when we're making the decision and when the bids were due. I think we asked for them in, like, thirty days, well, they wanted sixty days. So I'm trying to give them sixty days by having them due in July. So.
I know Indiana, a company I worked for represents them, and their losses were large. In Nebraska and Iowa altogether, they lost money on them two states. So that's why they're pulling out of our state, which is understandable, because if they raise the rates to where they need to be, they want to have a new business anyway. And I guess the only thing here is, there's only three companies that are going to quote it that I know of. And you're going to have, every agency in town's going to have them three companies.
Same three companies?
Well, no, you're going to have, one will have Columbia, and then a couple of them are going to have the other two.
E M C.
Eastern, Western, or, so I don't know if you want to interview the agencies, to decide which agency you're going to pick to quote, or you're going to have six agencies? gonna pick to quote, or you're gonna have six agencies, one represent, represent three companies, and the companies only want one agent represent them, they're not gonna let two different agencies represent the same company. You have to sign it for the bid, you'll have to sign the agent of record letter of which agent you want to represent that company.
Is that to us, or is that to the insurance agents? Whoever makes the bid?
That's to whoever gets in here and gets the first AOR signed. And then if somebody else comes in and you sign a second one, then that overrides the first one.
Can't we just bid it out, Mark, and just let the insurance companies unangle which one's gonna?
No.
Can't do that?
No, the agent has to pick it to the insurance company.
I think when we gave it to Stu the last time, there was some other companies that were agents that were interested in the business, so I think it's important to change that we should give these same agents the opportunity to bid.
Whether it's a public or, at least in our...
I didn't understand that insurance jar, no, that's what I'm thinking, we'd get, have to get everybody in town and also get on...
But you give everybody in town, there's not enough companies for everybody in town to do one.
Yeah, I understand.
He's saying, he's saying they're all gonna bid the same company.
They're gonna have the same company, is what you're saying.
But that's not, that's not really our problem.
That's not our problem, I mean, then they're gonna have to decide if they all come in, say they all come in on the same day.
Well, you have agencies that will do different things, you have some that have lost control with their agencies and some won't. You'll have agencies that put on work comp meetings and safety meetings, other agencies won't. So you gotta decide which agency wants to represent.
That's why when you put out a bid, you specify what it needs to be.
Does that have to be in what we want, in what we ask for?
No.
No, it's just what they do.
Just what they do.
Okay.
I'll tell you what to do about it.
So you're saying we may wanna pay more on our pre-aid to get some of those bids?
Oh, yeah, you might to get some of the services.
But our bid is probably just gonna be the basic insurance.
Right, but you're gonna have one agent, do you want the agency that can offer all that service to do the bids, or do you want an agency that can't offer, don't offer them services to do the bids? Because Continental Western or Columbia is only gonna, they can be three different agencies, but they're not gonna let Stu represent, Stu represent one company and Patrick represent the same company.
I heard that from our good team last time. But, I don't know how you do it.
We're just gonna, we're just gonna see who bids.
But last time, the, the agency, I think there was probably a difference in charge.
Oh, they're all gonna bid on it, it's just which agency's gonna bid on it, when you got more than one in town. Then, that's where, we said, with you knowing what's going on with that stuff, I'd ask you to help us out, you know, read through that and work with Mark on it, and maybe even looking at the subcommittee that, when you get to that point, saying, okay, let's, here's the pros and cons for each one of them. I don't know, I should something...
I just think it's important that we get that, each agent in town wants to bid, you know.
Well, probably have to abstain, because Cody would be one who wants to bid.
Oh, maybe you don't want to be...
Yeah, it's all abstain.
People wanna be your coordinator. Okay.
But that's just some things you'll have to look at, because there's gonna be five or six agencies that wanna bid.
When do we have to decide?
Pretty soon.
Well, we're gonna, we're gonna send the bids out the end of May, but it'll just be a basic generic, you know, bid, the same one we've done at the last two or three times.
And I think that's what Jody's doing, she's put together packets, everybody bids apples to apples.
Right.
Right.
So, but, but then, within those bids, they may tell you what other services they're gonna provide you at this dollar now, and I think you just have to look at it closely.
But we are giving several people the opportunity.
Well, we're gonna advertise in the papers, so anyone can bid, but we're also gonna mail it directly to the local people that we know of, that's what we did last time, we just mailed it directly to them.
Is that okay with everybody? Then the next item in the discussion is a multicultural report to the board.
That's just required by law every year, and it's a fairly thick document, it just shows you what we do to provide multicultural activities, case twelve, so. Should've been in the packet somewhere, I don't think that there's, if there's changes in it, if teachers make changes, and they wanna get those to the principals, and we get that taken care of, so. Did you get it or not?
Yeah, I did.
It's a big one. That's close, but it's a big one. I did?
Any questions about the multicultural report? The next item in the discussion changes in the nurse position.
I wrote some things in there, and basically, Betty Farmer's a full-time school nurse, she travels to all three buildings, and she's at each building, you know, two to, two hours and fifteen minutes, maybe two and a half hours each. It's, it's really not very efficient, you don't have to have a school nurse at all, there's no requirement, but we feel like at the elementary, that's really where it's needed to, that's where you need to take temperatures and put on band-aids and counsel and console, and, what we need more at the middle school and the high school is someone to keep track of who needs their immunizations and some other paperwork, and filing physicals for athletics and, and things like that. So, my proposal is that we reduce the school nurse position to halftime, and that Betty stays at the elementary, and then we add a para halftime at the middle school, and a para halftime at the high school, and that Betty would coordinate with those two, and then the cost would be pretty much negligible, if you see what we pay an hour for a school nurse compared to a para, and I just think it would just be a more, more efficient system. I visited with all three principals, and they're, they're in favor of this, there would be no, no extra cost to the district, and I visited with Betty about it also, and she would be very happy to do that, so I just wanted to present it to the board, and if the board is okay, we would make that as an action item next month.
So she would move from the, the full-time nurse down to the May pay?
Halftime nurse, she'd still get the same hourly pay, she'd still be a school nurse, but she'd just be working four hours a day instead of eight hours a day, and she'd still coordinate with the other two, with, she gets normally the, you know, any of the new updates and laws and flu shot information and things like that, she would coordinate that through those aides, and with the principals also.
Any other questions about the nurse? Okay, then we go to the board policy, sixty-five hundred internet policy.
We, we have an internet policy, and this would just replace the one we have, and it came from the legislature passed some different things last year, and this policy came from the Perry Gesper firm. All of us in ESU six were, were gonna try to get on the same type of policy, just to stay pretty much coordinated with that, so this is one that they made for the ESU six, we didn't have to pay for it, and they just, ESU six paid for it and gave it to us all, which is, I like doing policies that way. So, we, we already have one, it just kinda takes the place of the internet safety policy that we already have.
That would replace the one we have.
It would replace the one we have, we numbered it the same number, so we'd replace sixty-five hundred that we had there, so.
Are there any great changes?
Uh, I'd have to read and compare it with the one that I have, but I, I know that this one, Sherry, just contains the things that the, changes that the legislature made. There's probably something in here like on cyberbullying, that maybe wasn't in our other policy, yeah. Social networking, so it's just, ours was a little outdated, as everyone's was, but I don't think there's anything major. I think it's, again, I, we read through it as, as an administrative team, and there's nothing that really...
Nothing of the administrative would be left, and one on AOL that goes on and pretends to be a kid, and...
To me, it's pretty nice, it's about the four pages, that's better than a lot of policies.
And then we need to turn in our reviews of policy forty-one thirty through forty-one eighty-seven.
There'll be one more section of the four thousands next month, and then we'll be through the four thousands, and we'll go over the ones that people checked.
Yeah, there's nothing...
Okay, then the next board meeting is scheduled for June eleventh, is that okay with everybody?
Okay, before we close, and I see Mr. Malone's out there, thank you for a great activities of supervision, whatever, all year long, and athletic engagement was very nice, nice to see you, and feel the respect. How you doing with that extra activity schedule, you got enough coaches for next year?
Uh, we're still working on it.
Okay.
We're, we're getting closer.
Good, but thank you, thanks for being here.
You want some of your...
Move.
I'll suck it, I'll suck it.
Yes.
Lovely.
Yes.
Donovan, yeah, Oshner, Blaine Schmidt, and Gomar.
Yes. Hey, thank you. You should be here.
Quiet. We're making a movie right now.
She's a great person, she's a great person.